Yeah, I did.
I guess we.
Excuse me, John.
Yeah.
When you get started. Before you start. Make a statement about the line of sight concerning the highway department.
Okay.
Just for tidbit of information.
Do we do anything? It's like a pleasure. Call our meeting to order.
You can.
They don't have to.
We can just do it.
Okay. So you want to talk before we approve the minutes then?
Yeah, for about thirty seconds.
Okay.
No, right after you.
Right after we approve the minutes, okay. Yes. Okay. What do we get? That's not the same thing?
Right.
I don't know, they just.
Oh, this was. Right, because we wouldn't have had another.
Yeah.
So I didn't know if we had another copy.
I guess I don't know.
So I guess just read them and then just sign them.
Okay. Okay. All right, we're going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. And the first order of business is approval of the minutes from the last meeting, which was in January.
I make a motion, we approve, but with one correction that my name is spelled wrong.
Okay, we have a motion by Marcia Daly with one correction. Any seconds?
Second.
Okay. Second by Lily Gilstrap. All in favor? Approving minutes, so raise your right hand. A motion's approved. Yeah, let's go ahead and sign it for doing this. All right, before we get into the variances, Todd Ewan would like to speak.
Yes. And Travis may have already been willing to address this, but I didn't know for sure. But anyway, I want to make one thing clear. In both of these cases, I know Travis went out there and looked at them. And I myself, I looked also. And the highway department superintendent also viewed the two cases. And there are no line of sight or safety issues as far as traffic concerns or anything like that in either case. So just wanted to make that aware to everyone here on the board.
Okay. All right, so our first order of variances would be Doug Turner. If they'd like to state their case, I guess.
Come up here, probably.
Oh, yeah, can come up. Todd, is that you? Yeah, I just.
Yeah, he goes.
Yeah.
I didn't want two copies of this because they're both sixty foot setbacks. It's the same thing, but that is, let me grab one.
Oh, I thought you gave me the.
Oh, you're giving us.
This is the order.
This is the order.
These are the ordinance, and there's minutes in there. It's basically the history of the sixty foot setback, okay? When it began. There's both ordinances there in front. And then you've got two, and then the next page would be that two thousand and three.
Yeah, I saw that.
When it was first introduced. And the rest is just minutes talking about sixty foot setback.
This is the sixty foot setback from the middle of the road by rock.
Correct.
You know, we addressing that today? Because that was relevant.
Do you want one?
Somewhere.
Yeah, I should, you have to go through those copies, okay? There's highlighted. There it is. Yes, from seven. And the ordinance, your last three pages, your ordinance references one fifty point two seven, and that's the back. Basically, three or four pages, but just, that's what's in there. That's what that package is.
Back in two thousand and one, I mean, you didn't have any zoning ordinances, so it was just a proposal back there?
Well, yeah, it was a proposal, and then, yes, it got handed on.
Got handed under the commission, right.
Which is O one, John? Is that what you said?
I think that's what I read in here.
No, it'd be an O three.
O three, okay, okay. Off that one.
All right, there you go.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. All right, Doug, if you want to come up to speak right at that desk and.
Do you want the rest of the packet, John? Or do you want that?
Yeah, well, I mean, go ahead and give it to us, I guess. I thought that was it, too.
No, that's just for both.
No, it's just the ordinance.
It's just the ordinance, okay.
At least if you want to, or you and John make a decision here.
Just to be sure, like, there's not a separate thing that addresses businesses? Because I notice these say residence and residential structures. Because wasn't one of our variances a business?
Yes, the second will be.
Okay.
All structures, any type.
Yeah, notice it has that language later. Here.
Yeah, it doesn't distinguish, though, in the actual ordinance from twenty twenty one, whether it's residence, silver, business.
Yeah, because there it says all structures of whatever type or description.
These are the actual variance packets right here. Sorry, I already hear some, yeah. Before you guys get started with that, John, there was one mistake here, that there was nothing we could do about it. And it's going to be, you're in Lisa's call, what you want to do, but the date of advertisement is right here. That was a mistake by the Scottsburg paper. And we had to change, because we had to change a date from February to March. They ran the ad for March. We sent in the correction for, they ran the ad for February. We sent in the correction for March. It didn't get corrected.
So it still said February.
It still said February, yeah. So what they sent us back was. That's what they actually sent us back.
I didn't even do that.
Yeah, so when you blew it up, it was this, yeah. So it's, you know, that's, you know, if you want to, I mean.
Well, we better talk about that first, because if we've got anything.
Can I see how it's worded? Do we have that in here? It's something in this packet, is it?
It should be.
I mean, if it was going to be readable to you, then.
So it was sent out beginning of March, oh, okay, explain that again. It was, it had the wrong date of the meeting.
The second.
They're supposed to be noticed that it's.
Mm-hmm. All the other dates are right.
Yeah.
Have gotten changed, except the advertisement, when they reran the advertisement.
Can I see the one that's readable?
Let's see, by the time it ran, it was too late. So if they've got, that'll happen, you know, I guess at any time. If it doesn't get corrected by the paper, you know, and we sent the correction in, there wasn't nothing else we could do on our end. And this is kind of what, whatever you think, too, Lisa and John, if you want to hear it, if, you know, if you go ahead and hear the variance, if you wanted to have the Scottsburg paper, it had to have fourteen days, I believe, in front of the hearing. If you would want to run it again, Scottsburg, run the, run the ad again, for fourteen day, fourteen more days, that if anyone else has an objection.
Well, they would have to object not to this body, it had not come to you and say.
Exactly, yeah. Either, well, either to me, Lisa, or.
I mean, is that the safest way you think to do this?
Well, I guess the question I would have would be, is anybody negatively impacted by this?
Right.
The folks that are here tonight to present, do they feel like they are negatively impacted by this?
There wasn't a phone call. I didn't receive even the fed one. I.
And I asked, is there anybody out here that's here to object about us giving?
About this variance? Or is he the only one here for it? You're Mr. Turner, correct, ma'am? Is anybody here, else here to address this variance that he's requested?
Guess not.
Can we go ahead and hear it? And, I mean, if, if you think it's necessary, can we just withhold our ruling until the fourteen days is up on that? And instead of having another meeting, and that way, if nobody objects in that timeline, then it will go forward from.
I think if, if, we, that would be a good plan to go ahead and hear it. Everyone's here, they're prepared. They've not been negatively impacted by not having enough time to prepare, or they would have spoken up. So I see no reason why we can't accommodate them, they're here, they're taking time out of their schedules, they planned to be here.
Right.
That would be my, and we could either defer the ruling or, I think that's a good, or, or make the ruling and make it contingent, subject to being republished.
With no complaints or no objections.
Objections.
I think that's a good plan.
Yeah.
Have to make a decision, I guess, as the ad runs, where, if there is a complaint, where it's supposed to go, but.
Does it not say? Just may appear at this hearing.
At the hearing, yeah.
Can, can it be changed to say that all interested persons may, um, in, say something, are to contact Travis Elliott?
I would say in writing.
In writing or something? By such and such, you know, I, I would think you could put that at the end of it.
Y'all's call.
Yeah, I think you almost have to.
I think we need to do something to cover it in that way.
Sure.
Because we don't want somebody else to come in.
Say they were, yeah, notified.
Correct.
We, we did everything we could, it's just, it's on their end. They, they said they would go ahead and, you know, do whatever they had to do to make things right, so. But y'all's call.
Um, when you send it to them, do, do you ask for them to proof it back to you or anything? Do they send proofs back to you?
They don't have to. And then what they sent back was the wrong day.
Oh, they sent back the.
Yeah, after they see it was already.
It was already done, so they didn't proof it to you before the publication. Well, they need to do that. Because that may, that could happen again, I mean, that's a.
We sent it in, we sent it in the correction to them, they said they'd take care of it, so.
Yeah.
But then, but if they go ahead and run it, I guess, if they wait to the last minute to say it's deflated anyway. It just depends how, how they do, I mean, they don't want to do so much.
Okay. All right, I think, let's go ahead and listen to Mr. Turner and then we'll make a decision on this. So I guess just kind of tell us why you want the variance and why it has to be done.
It all started, I've been my residence for eighteen years, okay? Everybody needs a garage, everybody. And, and I've went all these years raising kids, and this and that and everything. Well, finally, they're all gone, they're out of the house, so it's my time. So I'm ready to build a garage, okay? I get ahold of the contractor, I have him come look at my property and where it's at, okay? The north side of my property that runs adjacent to Neesmith Road, okay? Actually, my roof runs to West Washington School, right? I live right on the corner. Garage, my property. And why do I have to put it on this side, the north side? It's because the south side of my property, on the other side of my home, is where I've been my setting and all the runs of the land, okay? And my property sucks. It drops down into a ravine from behind my house, side of the house, the other end of the property, it all goes down. And that was the most feasible, it's the only place I have to build anything, okay? And, and my driveway was there, well, I had this contractor come out and look at it, and he, he shoots grave, all this and that. Well, to make a long story short, two weeks after he had come and looked at this, he had come and built me a path, excavated and built me a path out there to build my, my garage on. Well, I'm doing all of this, and I'm excited as you don't even know. And the, the, the fellow that I got building my garage had run in to a setback deal, okay, a variance deal. And he'd come over to talk to me, and like I said, I had this pad done, paid the man, it's finished, pretty much finished. Um, and then I find out about this setback, and I had no idea whatsoever. You know, of course, I wouldn't know, I'm not a builder, I'm not a contractor, I don't go around the county buying property and building buildings, you know? So I was totally unaware of it. So right then, I stopped everything, like I said, well, the pad and everything's all done. And I come up and I see Travis. And me and Travis kind of got together, and I told him what I'd done, and the situation and everything, and I told him, I said, I want to come to you, I want to do this the right way. I don't want to just sit and say, hell with it, and have somebody start building my building, and then get halfway through it, and then be stopped or whatever, and then have to go through a bunch of stuff. So I thought, well, I'm going to do it the right way, we'll do this before I do anything. And Travis was more than helpful, uh, getting me shutting in the right direction, and, and, you know, getting these papers, down papers, and this and that, and letting me, you know, and me figuring out everything I need to do to file for this setback there. And, uh, I've done so, I've done everything that I think I was supposed to do and everything, and, uh, and I don't have sixty feet, that's the problem, I do not have sixty feet where I have to build this building. From the center of Neesmith Road, this is a road, country road that runs over to Case Chapel. It's not a main road, it's just, and basically what goes up and down through there for the people that live on that road, the people that stand grassy, that live on the road. And, uh, uh, I took and I sent out my letters to the, to the people that I knew, too. Like I said, I done everything I'm supposed to do, and this is where it happened.
Okay, so you've got, right now, you've got a slab there, how big is this?
I don't know, the lurch of concrete, this is.
Oh, I thought, okay, okay.
It's, uh, it's just a big pad that I had done with, with the dirt and the rock. That way, when the builder come in, then they can start doing the grades and whatever, and their concrete or whatever it is they do, you know?
So how far is it actually off of the, off of the, let's say, the edge of the road, not the middle of the road? How far does it sit back on the?
I think from the middle of the road, and I'm, and we've not really got a set stone spot for a post in the end of the garage, see? But it's close, I think, I measured it with twenty-three or twenty-four feet from the center of Neesmith Road to where
The building.
This building is about feet, but there's a thing, there's an embankment about this tall that runs from my driveway, edge of my driveway, all the way past, you know, by my property. And there was a big tree there, and the electric company cut that tree, thank God. But anyways, like I said, there's, there's an embankment, oh, I don't know, three feet tall, that, that comes off of the road, and that's where the building will be. So, I mean, the way I measured it with a tape measure, center of the road to approximately twenty-three, twenty-four feet.
Okay.
Is why, and that's what I've got, I mean, and the sixty, the forty, a forty foot wide is going to run parallel to the Neesmith Road, and the sixty is going to run back this way. Well, at the end of the sixty feet and the pad, my yard will drop off. There's no more, I have no more room here, you know?
So the.
That's one radio, I mean, that's what I'm asking, you know?
So you got twenty, twenty-three feet from the center of the road, and what is the, what is the width of the road, like? Eighteen feet wide or something like that, do you, do you know? Yeah. So you're only going to be about there, maybe thirteen feet actually from the edge of the, from the edge of the road itself, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think not only from the center, I think.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, when you're trying, when you get ready to pull in the Neesmith Road off of West Washington School Road, once you pull in, then you start cutting your wheel, you're in my driveway. Once you pull in and you give gas on your vehicle, you're already past where this garage is going to be.
Are there stop signs up at intersection?
Yes.
Okay, well, that, that makes it a lot better, because people aren't, I would be worried if people were flying through there.
Sure.
Being, because it's pretty close.
Actually lives next to me, on the hill. And then, like I said, once, once people come and pass our house downhill, they're on the brakes, they're coming to the stop sign.
Okay.
You know, so, like I said, basically, when you pull in the Neesmith Road and you give your vehicle gas, you're already past.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Is there any particular reason that you chose this size, forty by sixty?
Well, that's, that's what size I want. I've got a semi that I have restored, and that's another reason why I need this garage, is to put this be semi, because hell, I learned this thing, you know?
Yeah.
Knocked down, I've got a lot of money in that van that I have, that excavating bill for me, that's about eight thousand dollars, you know?
How tall is it going to be?
Uh, sixteen foot sidewalls is what it's going to be, because I got to have a fourteen foot over there, so it's a semi. I mean, you know, I'm not, it's got that to go in, I've got my hardware, I've got my equipment, I've got the motors, tools, everything, you know?
Good question.
Yeah.
Mr. Turner, did you talk to your contractor about how much rock it would take to move it back a certain distance, how many loads?
There's no way, there's no moving it back, sweetheart, there's no moving it back, because my property drops off.
What's the grade change?
I know.
I'm trying to pull up the elevation. Yeah, it's a, it's a drop, it's not just a slump, it's.
It's a draw.
Yeah, almost, looks like a sinkhole.
Basically, I mean, when I moved there, all that down there was all woods, and obviously, me and my dad, my dad actually bought that property. And then I sent him home there, and that's where I've been since I was a baby. That's, it's, um, something, I've been there a long time. I was actually raised next to it, you know?
Okay, so it looks like, it appears that the southwest corner is like the sinkhole area, correct?
Well, it's.
So your, where your home sits appears to be basically level, correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, it is level, but then on the other side of my home, I've got.
And then it starts sloping back.
Oh, it, it steps down.
So it looks like we've got maybe. It goes from about what they call seven ten down to like a six ninety-five towards the back, so it does, it does go from that's feet. So it's about sixteen foot difference between Neesmith Road and close to his back property line, so that's the.
Have we had any, prior to the land use, planning and zoning, what did the county used to do? Did they even stop people from doing anything like that before, years ago?
Did they when you were commissioner?
Well, yeah, I guess. Right, maybe when I was commissioner and even before then, I don't know what.
Yeah.
That's just really close, but if it wasn't for the, there being stop signs there, I wouldn't want to do it.
On the other end, the Neesmith Road, I can't remember what year it was, but I actually bought that corner down there. And then I bought a new mobile home, sat there, and me and my dad, there's a twenty, thirty rocks there, and it's still there. And I'll bet you, fella, from the end, from the edge of the road to the, to the wall of that garage, probably eighteen feet.
Yeah.
I mean, but back then, there was no common setback, you know? Now, you did have to have a building permit, I do remember that. When we dug that out.
I just didn't know how common that was to be that close, you know? I know years and years ago, you know, it was, but.
Let's see, what, you're saying twenty-three feet? Great. So it, it's only going to be about ten, ten feet from where you moat at?
From what?
From where you moat at? Or maybe thirteen?
Eighteen, no. I'll be able to, I'll have some yards of moat there. Eighteen, no, I'll be able to, I'll have some yard to mow there around where this will be. You see what I'm saying, but that, I'm not really sure how many feet it is where the backside of this garage will be to my mom's property line. But, see me like, maybe, oh, there might be ten feet there, ten foot feet.
Yeah, that's what this diagram shows, ten feet from the building to the property line, meaning you could still get a mower in there and it's not gonna cause growth.
It's a five foot setback on the property lines.
So it's within that.
But sorry, it's like hitting one, as far as being.
So it's, that's right.
That's right up there.
That's all I was looking for, I was like, you know, it's. It is really close. Cause just like you said, when you take how close it is to the road. It's really close.
But you're gonna actually pull into the garage from your existing driveway though, right?
Well, right, I'm off the Nees, when you turn in the Neesmith Road, and my driveway is right there.
Yeah.
So I'll pull into my driveway, and then there'll be a garage.
So will the overhead door be facing east then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm coming in, pulling in, in front of the garage, you know, and stuff.
That actually makes me feel a little bit better with it.
Oh, yeah.
And like I said, the, the, the West Washington School Road, I call it nine-sixty-five, literally.
It is.
I mean, it's, it's like a racetrack up there, I mean, it is.
Like boiled.
Like I said, the, the Neesmith Road, the most traffic we can get up on that road, it's usually with this down.
Yes, do you want to re. And I mean, under this, if that's the exception, I can, I don't like.
Yeah. Um. Okay, anybody else, any more questions?
It's a lot to get through as we're talking. Are we gonna make a decision or hold off?
I mean, I would, I think we would make a decision if we're gonna vote yes, subject to the paper correcting that. Um. You know, not to start any work till that time period has passed, if we approve this, till the, uh, paper puts the correct information.
We're hesitant because it is so close, I'll be honest, you know, it's.
I just wish, I just wish you could see it, eventually see it.
Oh, actually I did, I went, uh, looked at last night.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but that doesn't change, or, you know, the fact that how close it is to the road.
You know, I know the rules and, you know, regulations and everything, but like I said, when I started all this, I had to handle, but I didn't know anything about that.
Right.
All I knew is that was the only decent part of my property I could build on, and it was still, you know, and I still had to have it.
Which is completely understandable, but it, it doesn't change like, if the county had to come in and do something to the road, is your building in the way and then they have to, you know, pay you for a temporary taking of some of your property? And so those are the types of things we have to consider, it's not just, you know, that, yeah, we understand where you're coming from and where you need to put your garage and that you need to have it this big, but we have to consider, you know, everything and, and how it impacts the future and you know, I don't think it's an issue with your surrounding neighbors and y'all have any, you know, I don't think there's any issues with that, cause it is pretty, um, open there.
Could you move your, could you put in some more aggregate, uh, toward the back? It looks like in this photo, that you've got some room to at least go a little bit further, like eighty, ten or fifteen.
Forty-eight thousand dollars, okay, I'm actually forty-eight thousand dollars in, deep on this project, and I ain't had a first post at my property. I'm out of money, I'm, I call, I call someone.
Fleming, I, I don't know why, honey, you're sleeping.
I'm sorry, I just don't.
Either call me Lisa or Miss Fleming.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. But I mean, um, I mean, I didn't win no lottery, I'm, I'm broke, I'm broke, I've been, I've spent all the money that I've got to spend on this.
Who, who did the gravel work, uh?
Nick out of the N and M farm and excavating?
And he did not know that he needed to.
He said he did.
That's like, I, I think your contractors really should have known better too, I agree.
Then when I brought that out, I was like, oh, I called him, trust me, I called him, I did. And he played dumb.
Well. I mean, if you just did five feet, can he not move that slab, five, just?
To reduce the size of the building.
Yeah. I mean, how much of a?
My concern is kinda liability issues too, I mean, wrecks having happen on icy roads. Um, you know, what, what, what if there would be, would be a wreck there?
We're gonna hit some land, that's what we're gonna hit, or a tree stone.
So this building that's here, was this like a shed or something that's now gone?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So at one time there was already a building, no, that's sitting further back.
It's just like a shed or something.
No, it was milk.
It was a what?
It was one milk, it was any barn.
So it's a mobile, it's like something on runners.
Yeah, so is the edge of it.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
It's a building like on runners.
Yeah, but it's set quite a bit further back.
Cause it's almost like your corner of your building is twenty-three feet, it looks like it's like you'd have to split that in half, it's almost halfway. You're, so you're basically eleven, you're less than twelve feet from the edge of the, edge of the road. Yeah, it's just not. When I was coming to this meeting, I was thinking, okay, someone's gonna come here, I knew it was sixty feet, and I'm thinking, okay, maybe they want twenty feet. I wasn't prepared for twelve feet from the edge of the road.
Yeah.
I wouldn't do it if there was a stop sign, oh, you know, I would, absolutely wouldn't do it, but.
So what could the liability issues be, Lisa?
Well, you've got a sixty foot setback.
Yeah.
This is a tremendous deviation.
I know.
And there are things that could be done, although at somewhat greater cost to the, to the property owner. Um, you know, the question would be, were there, you know, if, if, if you wanted to approve this, then it begs the question, could something else have been done? Could the building have been made smaller? Could it have been repositioned? Could it have been placed on another spot? Could some more have been brought? You know, what, what's, what's the worth of a human life? Um, the damage, the potential damage to his property, I haven't, hopefully that thing would ever happen. But if it did, it would beg the question, did, did the county ask responsibly?
Mm-hmm.
And then you have to think about, you've gotta be fair to everybody, you gotta follow good standards and guidance and, and, uh, you know, is there a possibility for a compromise to lessen liability? And it, it's a very good point too, that if you have a structure sitting that close to the road, and there's the need for widening project, and we all know how fast everyone goes on West Washington, that at times during the day it carries a lot of traffic, if there's a need to do that, the cost of purchasing property, demolishing or moving it is huge. It delays projects and often times results in condemnation hearing and the payment of, of inflated, excuse me, prices for property, so those are all things that should be weighed in condition of safety.
I made a comment.
Yes.
The, the residences there on the property, if y'all go to your areas, if you're trying to weigh out a compromise, and it may not even be feasible, but I'm just throwing this out there, stepped into this before, uh, what at the edge of the building was at equal to, at or equal to the corner of the house? Cause if the house is, if you make him pull it back, I don't know the measurements, if you make him pull it back sixty, you know, is that past the corner or just take it just to the corner of the houses existing there? Because if you're making him pull it back sixty, and the house, the corner of the house is closer than sixty anyway, you see what I'm getting at?
I mean, it looks like the corner of the house surely is fifty feet from.
I was gonna say, if you make them both even.
I don't think you could, yeah, but that, that's so far back though, it pretty much kills it for him. Yeah, cause it's, it's not even.
Well, what's this additional, like on this diagram? There's this section here, like there's the building here forty by sixty, and then there's this other section here, what is that?
Ten by forty.
I know, but what, or what are, what's the purpose, I guess, of showing us that?
Is that a, this area is gonna be built on it, or?
Well, this here, that's nothing, that's just coming down, showing that this is forty feet wide, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
This is nothing here.
Is there any room, like say you took ten feet off the front and put ten feet back here, what, what is this?
But it's still, it's, it's a drop off.
Okay, so nothing, there's nothing usable beyond this line right here, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. Just wasn't sure why that was drawn.
Yeah, that, well, it's actually, I shouldn't have just made it dotted lines, but it was kinda pinky swirking sort of. But that just, that just shows, that's the width of that.
Okay.
But yeah, right back here, this whole, this whole se- section of my property just drops down in a hole.
And there's no way to turn it, I guess, because if you turned it, then you're gonna be too close to your property line.
Right. Let's see, here's kinda, maybe some better.
That's the back?
That's, this is Neesmith Road.
Oh, that's the front, okay.
See, here's the back, and right here, this, this ground drops off.
Yeah.
So, there's, when you stand back here at the bottom of this block right here on this.
So you're basically making it as big as you can?
Well, that's about as, that's about all the room that I have, you know. Yeah, you can see right there, see, I've still gotta do some finishing with some rock and dirt in here to finish up the corner, but that's basically, yeah.
You know, it's, well, you know, back to the situation with the contractor, the contractor should have known better.
Yeah, he should.
It just really bothers me.
Yeah.
I mean, it really bothers me because, I mean, that's just common sense, it's not just, it's just common sense.
His excuse to me was, obviously, where he's coming from. You know, so.
Uh, I mean, me personally, just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna shut it down for you, but I'd sure like to have a little bit of get on your end, maybe even if it's five foot.
I mean, I can, like I said, two things, I've locked the eye, everything.
Yeah.
All the trusses, all the ones, all the metal, everything, you know.
And you say your mother lives beside you?
Yeah.
Which side, to the west of you?
Yeah, yeah.
Could there be, could there be a way that you could purchase a little bit of ground from your mother's and put the garage to where it's farther back this way and instead of situating it long ways north-south, doing east-west?
The black guy back on her property, a big old tree property, I mean, and it probably ain't like ten feet from, from the property line, is this one big old tree, is this here, you know.
Travis, what did the highway superintendent think of this thing, and what's, as we kinda, you, you, did you talk to?
Did you talk to him last?
Yes. And.
There, there's no, no, there's.
Are we gonna open up a can of worms going this close, that's what I'm worried about, someone's gonna say, well, you did it on that road, and we're gonna start setting precedent for.
That's, that's my issue, that and how close it is. You know, if it was fifty-five, I would, to me, that's a no-brainer, because no, I don't think all legal descriptions even go to the center of the roadways, I'm not even sure if some of these roads are even where they say they should be anyway. Um, even ten feet, you know, if it was ten feet off, but you've got two-thirds of it. It's, it's two-thirds, basically, um, and that's my reluctance is down the road, you're gonna have the next person say, well, you, you did this here, so, you know. It, it's just so close and I think, I think I could see it causing problems down the pipeline for li, like liability issues, um. I mean, just, just things like, I don't know, as simple as doing, um, snow removal. It could, it could be an issue, I mean, I've seen banks taken out of people's front yards because they didn't, because couldn't see where the snow was and wasn't, and I, I just, I think we're opening a can of worms that we probably are gonna regret later. For it, be, just because it is so far, and I, I think, I think you got a, a really bad deal from, who put that there? I, I think they should have known, if, if they ran a legitimate company that did that kind of work, they should have known. I mean, they, they should know what those guidelines and requirements are in the counties where they're working, because it's going to keep coming up.
Yeah, they should have known, I agree, I was.
I mean, he should give you a break on helping you fix it. But.
I was mad.
I know.
He got me, he got me for a few more thousand dollars.
I understand. But he is gonna run into issues, I mean, I'm not trying to throw him at, but he is gonna run into issues going from county to county, cause they're not even the same from one county to the next.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Is this your mom's place up here? Okay, it looks to me from this photograph, that you could, if you could get some land off your mom and move your garage, you could move it considerably further back and not run into elevation issues.
Right. Right at, well.
I think the total consensus is that there are some options to keep it from being so close. And I think that's what we, like you said, like to see, a little bit of working with us here.
Yeah, I mean, it just doesn't sound like the, the way it's presented, we haven't voted on it, but we're, I mean, it's just, we're struggling with the way it's being presented, it's just, I mean, we're just not even close to that sixty feet.
I mean, it's, it's between you and your mother, but I see that as an, as an option, a possible option.
And possibly two structures, you say you've got your building materials, but perhaps you could put a structure that looks like you've got some room that I don't see from this one photo I'm looking at, where there are trees in the way and, and you might be able to, when you're septic, if you put it off of facing West Washington School Road over this way, you could maybe have two smaller structures.
placed on the property that would, would put you within the setback or very close to it. That might be another option, two separate structures.
I guess we should, I mean, I guess.
Are you, are you ready to make a decision?
I am.
All right, well, I'll make a motion and we vote.
Okay. Um. As presented, uh, there's a motion to approve or if there is a motion, uh, I'll take that as a no, I guess.
Motion to vote, I guess. I'm not sure how we, which one we do, a motion to approve or a motion to deny or a motion to vote.
Well, either or, we can, we can.
Do you think someone can make a motion to do something?
Do something.
If someone feels strongly, you can make a motion to approve or deny. All right, I'll make a motion to deny it as presented. I think there are some options. A second.
We have motion, second. Uh, all in favor, uh, with our decision, just raise your right hand. We're sorry, you know, I just think it needs, we need to come back with something just.
It's just so close to the runoff. It's just too close.
I do understand, if I had sixty feet, if I had a hundred feet, I wouldn't be setting.
I know, I know.
But I've been spending all that money at the end and buy all this damn material, I'm forty-eight thousand dollars deep in this.
Well, maybe you'll have, maybe you can have some legal recourse, like at least with the guy that had the pad, I don't know. But he should have known, he just shouldn't have.
I mean, that's, that's not even in question.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it is. You know, so.
I mean, I'm not opposed if, like we talked about, if you get some money from, I'm not money, some land from your.
Maybe configure it differently to where there's a little bit more specs.
I mean, I just don't wanna go twelve, twelve feet from the edge.
I still don't do it. The problem is so many twenty feet of her property. I still ain't gonna do nothing to it. I still ain't trying to solve the problem.
Okay, it's been denied, so. What's our next one is? Maxwell Road?
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and take the, uh, next variance, Jesse Garber. And if you keep having material on that.
Yeah, like I said, the very first package, just use the same.
Okay.
Before going further, where's the, you guys have the minutes signed, so I'll, so I can take those back.
Sign somebody's. This, I have the unsigned one. Oh, no, let us have it, pass it down there. At least I have them, got this.
Yeah, I passed.
No, the minutes that we signed.
Oh, the minutes you signed? Oh, yes.
Yeah, she does.
Yeah.
Say it with that.
Okay.
Very good.
So Travis, you wanna just kinda give us the, the basics on what we're, what we're looking at on the second variance?
Sometimes it's easier to look at the pictures and you put on the first ones of. That's just the, that's area of the property. Next one. The notice. All basically the same as.
I like them just like the.
Yeah, you can just go to that. It's the front of that, let's see, thirty-eight off the very front.
Thirty-eight feet from the, from the center.
Uh huh, yes, from the center. There should be two, go ahead, flip it over now. There's two of them in there. One that, uh, Jesse and Terry provided.
That one picture looks like it. It's pretty much certain, right?
Uh huh, yeah, that's basically it.
So it's a little office restroom.
Oh, here it is, here it is, it must have skipped.
Is this an existing structure?
No, it's a new structure.
Which one's gonna, this is?
That's here, put this back. That's that building.
That's there, okay, that's what I thought.
This is sitting right there.
Right there.
Yep, right, so you can see, here's that, yeah.
It's thirty-eight feet from the center. It's like, uh, what is that, what's the dimensions on that building? Or the?
Yeah, it's Terry, you wanna get something?
Terry, you wanna come on?
Yeah, come on up. He can answer those questions for you, but it also be there in the packet.
Hello? Uh, I guess I'm gonna plead guilty of not knowing this rule either. I've been in this construction business and forced to manage it for fifty-one. So, there's other things that are in, but I didn't know this, this rule either. Really hadn't heard of it. Didn't, is this what you give it? Okay, so, anyway, that being said, uh, the big building behind it required that we have sixty foot around this big building so that we weren't, uh, out of compliance. It's, I don't remember how many square feet, sixteen. Seventeen thousand feet or about. Anyway, he needed sixty foot clear all around this, which he's got. And so that was part of the criteria where we set this, uh, is make sure we wasn't, uh, messing up the clearance for the other building and get hit out of, out of compliance. So, you know, he got staked it out and went for it. I never was a saint, never heard of the setback rule, but you know, we're thirty-eight off the center line to the front porch. As you can see, there's two big drives, all the traffic will be behind the building. And, you know, it's a straight stretch of road here, it's not, uh, an incurable or anything like that. I'm sure that, uh, they'll mow and take care of it. God, he won't have to do any more ring running along that side of the property anyway. Uh, again, he's got the septic in, we got the building basically drive in and, uh, that's where we got to. Now, I told Travis this and I don't know exactly how this, to, to make it simple that it don't happen again. Uh, but, again, I got his purpose for both of them to stay. Travis really doesn't do the commercial, but he watches after the setback. And somewhere along the line, maybe, I don't know, but he could get on the rulings with the, uh, state and get a copy of that there's a permit for this property. Uh, and again, I, I won't make this mistake again. But, but again, uh, you know, it's one of those things, uh, I work with Travis a little. He's mainly, he does the residential side for the county. I work for different inspectors, state inspectors for Indiana, has been there, has no issues far as they're concerned. Uh, because the state, far as they're concerned, you can go right up to the property line and there's a setback. You may have had a firewall there, but I mean, you can pretty much put it in your own property, then the local setbacks start controlling, you know, that to a certain degree. So, that's what, that's what the story, questions?
Well, you're in the same situation. Well, you're further along than the other gentleman. You're pretty much, you've got.
Yeah. Ready for inspections and dry waters?
It's not near as close as the other one?
No, it's not, it's not. What's the speed limit on that section through there?
Candy Road.
Forty-five.
Okay.
Well, it may be less than that since there's an intersection down a few hundred feet.
So this building is built. It's already, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I asked Travis and I thought he said no, it was, I guess he, he thought I was talking about an older building every day.
Yeah.
It's really nice looking, I'll tell you that. And we drove out last night. It's, it's pretty. I mean, it's not just thrown up, it actually like blends in and, yeah, it looks nice, yeah.
He said one of the neighbors in there, any of those, his office looks better than their house.
Oh. So Terry, you're about twenty-eight feet from the edge of the road to the edge of the porch?
Yeah, twenty-eight, thirty-four.
Yeah, it's a pretty good distance.
Yeah.
And what was the construction? Was this, uh, a barn or slab?
No, it's a slab.
Okay. What's the dimensions of the building?
Well, maybe you just remind, it's forty, forty-eight, but thirty-four, uh, thirty-six. Yeah, thirty-six to forty-eight, forty, uh, road and thirty-six structure. And then there's a, the back of it, there was really an open, uh, covered porch. And apparently it is a porch, but again, it's not like, you're only coming in the back of the building and that's where they really set the entrance up. And there's plenty of driving, parking behind the building.
So it could have been placed outside the setback area if you would have put it to.
Yeah, that takes it one end to the other, right?
Right.
Just for clarification, kinda off of this, but you said the state has no setbacks. They wouldn't have that on their own state roads?
Well, there'd be rightways there that are big and then
Okay.
if there was a setback off of that, that would be probably more like a local or a setback would be a state.
Okay.
State highways, the building department is two different funds.
Yeah, okay.
Building department, they're concerned about the, uh, clearance to property land lines. If you get, let's say, well, I'll look at one right now, if you get down within ten feet of anything less than that, it's gonna be a firewall. If you pull it back to twelve or fifteen, there's no problems. And the other thing that enters in there is the classification of the building and the use of the building. So those, that makes the numbers all over.
Well, just when you said the state didn't care, I was like, well, they wouldn't, they wouldn't allow a building that close to their, to their boundary. I know. Like you said, they do have an automatic rightway on each side.
Getting that way more and more all the time. You know, used to, that's where all the utilities would be out there in the same rightway. Now, let's say it's designed that they don't want it.
Well, it's because if they have to make any widen a road or make any improvements to it, they've got more issues to deal with.
Well, another thing I think is the state is acquiring more ground right off the bat, which is what happened under fifty-six, having to move the gas line, get that out of the state's rightway and, uh, let's say, like Midwest Gas, they end up burying all that bill because the state highway is in line or property area.
Right.
After the bottom of your right.
Terry, what's the purpose of this building?
It's an office and bathroom.
So how many people will be working?
It's about three, two.
Has, has there been anybody, um, complain about it or did anybody come forth and?
There's no obje-
No objections to it?
To speak against it, I guess.
If you did have to move the building, would you be able to reuse the materials?
Certainly not all the time, we just report, but anyways, it's a slab. It's got beaten before also. So, you know, that's, it would be a major deal. But, it was like a trash, two hundred thousand, we're gonna start again.
Did you say two hundred thousand?
Probably.
So that's what you've got in this building?
Probably two for all, isn't it? I'm just the traffic department, so. I'm gonna go to, I just drew up, there's a building.
Well, I mean, for me personally, I mean, I can live with, what is it, what we determined, it's about thirty, it's about thirty feet from the edge of the road. I can.
Are you making a motion?
Yeah, I guess I'll make a motion. You know, I don't like to set precedents, but, I mean, this one isn't.
This one's already.
This one's done and it's and to tear it down, it would be astronomical to try to move it and rebuild it.
No, but that shouldn't be the reason.
No, it's not, but it's.
It sets back.
Does that back a lot further.
Yeah.
So, I'll, I'll make a motion if it's approved as presented.
I think based on the guidelines, we have to approve it. I'll second it.
Right. And, uh, all, all in favor of the motion and the second, uh, raise your right hand. Okay. All right, I guess. Barry, better news for your, for you.
Um.
I don't like, you know, I, I just come back to our first one. I just don't want to set precedent that close. I'm not sure what we would have voted if you were ten feet off the road. Probably would have had to move it.
Well, again, there's, no plan decided if you was in Calgary, it should have been back. And yes, it could have been moved to the one end or the other. Would have been very handy because their offices over in Chautauq and everything are pretty much there in the center. So, you know, going across the driveway, it is right now. It's where it needs to be for everybody except for the gas line.
My next question is how to get awareness out to everybody.
Well, you're thinking the same thing as me.
These setbacks have been in place since two thousand and three?
Well.
So.
We're thinking actually.
I mean, it's.
Yeah.
But it was a request of the highway department.
Yeah, cuz we had no planning and zoning. So, there was nothing probably enforceable back twenty years ago.
Yes.
I don't think it would have been enforceable. I don't know.
As I say, I've been doing this and I've been getting state permits and I do work in the county for fifty-seven years and I never had, never had heard it till we got into this. It was something I was delegated to watch for the highway department and then I, you address it, send us a building. And it's on the front of the building. That's for all your residential.
Mm-hmm.
So. See, I don't have to go see him really need this commercial job.
Yeah, right. Right.
He was the one guy.
Maybe the, may, I, I think that the actual plan commission maybe should take this. Maybe the, may, I, I think that the actual plan commission maybe should take this subject of public awareness up. I don't know how to, what, how you would do that, but I think it is important.
It's a tough one.
Yeah. Because I don't, I just hate, I hate what we had to do. I hate it.
I'm just looking across there thinking, how close people will be in that building to the road where people are driving fifty miles an hour. You know, when someone struck it even like thirty-five miles an hour, there's like a forty-five percent chance they're going to be killed. You go up every ten miles per hour at the speed that you think it strikes a person, and the death, the mortality rate goes way up.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there's really no reason, even though there's a front porch, there's really no reason for anybody to be at that area at the moment, you know, while they are.
Well, and another thing I look at from the real estate aspect, just like I was talking about, you know, that everybody always says, it's just, you know, you, you start at the middle of the roadway for your livability. That is not necessarily true. And I think we have somebody here that could probably attest to that. And even if they did, how do you know the road's not been moved over time? And you could actually be building a building that's on your neighbor's line. It happened, it has happened many times. And, you know...
Out of the country, it's more apt to be to the middle of the road. But then there's the highway, uh, county highway road easements, which, you hear that number all the...
Right.
Nothing marking it. Typically, I think it's thirty-five or forty feet, but that's just assumed number, I think.
Well, it's documented somewhere.
Is it?
Somewhere, thirty, thirty feet's typical.
Thirty, seventy's the magic number?
Forty in some places, but...
At least it was.
It's not been taken off of any of the...
Don't worry.
You don't see it in the legal description.
If you look at the legal description, it says...
Seventy-two, twenty...
The property description, there was a...
Yeah, they are...
The, the problem, the problem is, why is that legal description was... Oh, yeah, that, those roads could have been moved by little for different reasons. Typically, like...
Planning schools.
Yes, the having to have...
Yeah.
Because the longer they are, usually the older they are.
Um, I'm going to make a motion that the BZA adjourned. Go have a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay.
Adjourned. We struggled, I think. Uh, we struggled. Yeah, I mean, you know, nobody wants to say nothing.
You know, what I think I can see is some, it was, it was, oh, someone...
Yes, sir. You did, okay.
She wasn't in the car.
I was, I just wasn't expecting them.
It's a precedent. But, but I do think, you know, if you name them...
Just glad, glad.
Yeah.
I mean, he really...
Yeah. And there's, it's a intersection.
That wasn't funny.
Yeah.
Which, Terry, I said, okay, what does have a...
Yes.
I had already... I still, you know, it's, it's a big... Yeah. Put a little film that, rotate the building the other way. He said, he was a big trigger. I think he was...
See if he has the...
We, we were trying to give him some options.
I was just getting out some homework.
Shocking, yes.
You know, I don't know what type of parents, so...
Yes, please.
That's why, I'm not going to have, I'm not going to have.
Unless, unless he's, he's a beginner, might as well actually, yeah, I get, I... He's still the penalty because it doesn't mean the setback has to start.
I'm not sure if we're on the way.
You're on the way.
Okay.
There was a few ways to get off the way through, yeah.
Maybe not. I blame you for maybe in here.
How are you? Heard you give Cheryl the grand tour. You give Cheryl the grand tour of the, the building. She'll tell me all about it.
So you make it coming out. Oh, that's what your house is.
Where's your most careful access from? Thank you.
And I did? Oh, yeah. Yes, I did. I had on my desk, and I was like, God. So what kind of wants to be you about some of this?
Yeah. One other word, as long as we don't have any radicals here.
Trust. Okay. The happening subfamily. Yeah. I did one criminal case, and that was too much for me. Long time ago. Did you? Do you know who Stephen Beard's husband was? Because I had ran an office from him. For about the first six months in the practice, and that's predominantly what he did, was criminal. He did subfamily, but he convinced me to take this criminal case. I like Steve.
Crazy, crazy.
Yeah. Yeah. So I did family mostly, but got out of that.
Let's move into our meeting order. Start out with the pledge, led by Mr. Scott, here by Mr. Brishford. Please say it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, just as it is in heaven.
By your face, please.
Gracious and heavenly Father, we come to you again, uh, this evening, and, and want to give you thanks for this, uh, beautiful night. Uh, give you all the blessings and, and, uh, everything in our lives. We ask that you be with us at this meeting, uh, to better our community, and we ask that we conduct this meeting and urinate. All this, we ask you, like gracious name. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. All right. I assume everyone's had a chance to look over the minutes of the February meeting. If so, could I have a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Baird, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by, well, by Al Morris, and she lay all acres. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Let's start out by, uh, big welcome to our newest planning commission member, Marsha Daly. Most gracious of them to serve. Appreciate that. This day and age, it's, it's, uh, sometimes difficult to get people to, to serve on boards, especially with the pay being what it is. Back to Marsha, we'll get rid of this question back there. Uh, Travis, what do you have for us?
Um, just, uh, I don't know, the discussion tonight, we're running late. Daniel's on that for me. Uh, just, uh, gonna have to get a hold on, you know, what number we're gonna go with on these setbacks. We're still, you know, we're still wrestling this around, seems like, so, you know, gone from review, and we're sticking with sixty, and, uh, you know, the county's always recommended sixty from the end in case of any, you know, problem, or, you know, just give you a little buffer there. Because it is sixty percent, so we're gonna have more of these variances come in. So, I mean, it's, you know, if it doesn't need to be sixty, if we're, you know, if we got other ideas on what number it needs to be, um, because we okayed one at thirty-eight now, so it's just about half. So we need to get this figured out, because we go from this is it, to it's not it. But I don't want a big discussion, I just want to put all that out there. So that's, it's, it's making things a little difficult, and that's, that's, but I have everything. I'll setbacks and all these new rules. So anyway, it's just something to think about.
Good.
It's all right.
Right. Thank you. That's, uh, that's a very good point. Uh, I don't think there is a magic number. I've looked at every county in the state of Indiana, maybe Mr. Blain can touch on that if he's, if he's, uh, up to snuff on what some of the setbacks are. Many times, these are county highway department issues to, uh, to some extent. Uh, but I just want to remind everyone that we don't live in a perfect world, sixty feet. Uh, I think it's a, a, uh, was a desirable amount of space, and, uh, it seemed to be what other counties are doing, so that's what we went with, and that's why we have an EZA. That's why you issue variances. I know it's not difficult, but that's just the way the world is. So we'll move on, and, uh, we'll certainly all think about that, and if we need to change it, we will. But, uh, if we have a handful of variances due to the sixty-foot setback, if we have four or five a year, then so be it. That's what the EZA is for. So we'll move forward with, stick with what we've got for now until someone comes up with a better plan. Thank you, Travis, and I appreciate it, because I know this, this affects you, and it's been a burden to you, too. Uh, this time, I'd like to welcome your mayor, Daniel Blain. If you'd come forward and lighten us on what some of the things you are, uh, seeing in the, in the county versus other counties, and, uh, we're always open to suggestions, and we're, we're not afraid of a little constructive criticism by any means. So we'll turn the floor over to you. Well, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and I just want to tell you how happy I am to be here tonight. Um, I feel like this meeting is a long overdue, uh, from a standpoint, uh, I started my business survey twenty-one years ago, and, uh, my first client down here in Washington County was Urban Day. And, uh, you know, Urban and I work close on a lot of projects. A lot of things we come up in Washington County over the years, and we talk about them at Urban, but say, you know, we really need to get you to plan its own meeting. And I'd say, yeah, I'm gonna do that one these days, I'm gonna come in there. You know, a year or two would go by, and Urban, a, a project would come up, or something would be a mess, and Urban would say, we still need to get you to plan its own meeting. You know, as I was sitting in the truck, I thought about all those times at Urban that had those conversations, and I thought, well, you know, if Urban was here, he'd say you find him. So it's been a long time. Uh, there's been some things that, you know, we, we've dealt with from a surveying standpoint, uh, from a planning standpoint in Washington County. Uh, for those who don't know me, my name is Daniel Blain. I, um, I am the owner of Forside Land Surveying, uh, company in downtown. I am also the elected Jackson County Surveyor. Uh, so I've been, uh, been in business here twenty-one years. Uh, we do a tremendous amount of work in Washington County. And the first thing I, I, I really want to say is, I, I, I love Washington. I, I, it's kind of become a second home for me down here. Uh, we do probably more survey work than I would say anybody else. Um, we've read some numbers on that, just to see, I think we do more survey work than any of the other companies. Um, so, you know, this is a place that we enjoy working, you know. The people here are fantastic. Uh, when you work in as many county surveys as I do, you get to know who is, you know, the type of people that you're dealing with. You know, I, I tell people a lot of times that Jackson County and Washington County are so similar. Uh, I find it's the same type of people, um, same type of atmosphere. We rarely run into, to, to problems down here as far as dealing with the public. Um, the reason why I wanted to come here tonight is just to kind of talk a little bit about the things that, that we see, uh, here in Washington County. Uh, a lot of things that we see here that we don't see anywhere else. Uh, and it, it, it's become more and more of a regular problem. Um, the subdivision control ordinance in, in Washington County is in real need of being brought up to speed. Uh, brought up to, to kind of the standard of how things are presented. Uh, we see a lot of issues that pop up because of the way your terms subdivision control ordinance is written. Uh, and a lot of the problems we see don't have to be that way. They don't have to exist. Um, you know, we see, we see a lot of setting systems over property lines, far more than we see anywhere else in any other county. Uh, we see garages over property lines, we see houses over property lines. We see easements not located in the right place. We see driveways that are not located with the easements. Uh, we see a ton of problems here in Washington County. Uh, it seems like half the work I do down here anymore is, is fixing problems. Um, and, you know, it, we do a lot of work in other counties, but it's, you know, it's, it's preemptive that we're giving the work upfront in order for the problems not to happen. Or what we see in Washington County is, is we see that we're cleaning up a lot of problems, um, that have already, that have already taken place. When you think of a subdivision control ordinance, I think a lot of people when they hear subdivision control ordinance, the first thing they think of is subdivision, right? Like a plan in subdivision, you grab in, and you see sixty, seventy, eighty houses, or, you know, in a small community, even ten or fifteen houses. And that's, a subdivision control ordinance is so much more than just a subdivision, as you would say with small laws in the community. A subdivision control ordinance is as little as, uh, somebody wants to cut a couple acres out for a suburb or a dollar. It could be everything from somebody wanting to put in, uh, you know, all the way to a subdivision of twenty, thirty lots, and everything that happens in between. Uh, you know, we see problems in Washington County where, you know, legal descriptions are prepared without the benefit of a survey, which, um, doesn't sound like a big deal, but you build in any other county, and that doesn't happen. So, uh, what you see is that you see legal descriptions are prepared, and then people build houses, and build structures, and they build things, and then they find out later what those property lines are, and it becomes a huge issue. And it is costing your community thousands and thousands of extra dollars. I've seen people here in Washington County that a simple solution, um, that they, they may have spent fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars to say to do things right in the beginning, put that on for another method because the subdivision control ordinance may be so lax in an area that they were able to do it this way, and then find out years later, it's going to cost tens of thousands of dollars to fix. Uh, today, for example, I sat at a kitchen table with a sweet lady, and had to explain to her that her legal description, uh, although it says she had forty-eight and a half acres, she only had thirty-six point seven acres. And, and I find that I have to have that conversation far too often. Uh, the legal description was prepared without the benefit of a survey. It was closed, it was transferred. Um, now she's in a scenario where she was wanting to buy, to buy that forty-eight and a half acres like for her three-dollar piece. They were gonna go and have legal descriptions prepared, because here in Washington County, you can do that. And one of the daughters thought, it might be a good idea if we did this survey. And luckily, they did, because they found out then that it was about twelve acres short. So then subdividing that property didn't now become very, there was some challenge there. Uh, just about every county that I work in, and I work in many, many counties, there are some sort of rules in place for subdividing land. And you do have some rules, don't get me wrong, there's some rules and some regulations about it. It is a desperate need of an overhaul. And what I see is, is, and not to throw specific people or, or companies under the bus, but you see, you know, companies like Indiana Land coming into Washington County and doing what they're doing. And the question I get asked a lot of times is, well, why do they continue to do that in Washington County? And the hard truth of that is, is because they can't. Because they can get away with it. We don't see that nonsense in Jackson County. We don't see it in a lot of other places. We don't see situations where they come in and they try to put five, six homes, uh, in by easements. We don't see private roads. We don't see subdivisions put in where fifteen lots is served by an easement that then became a private road that then turns into a major problem for your highway department. Uh, you know, we see a lot of issues where, um, in, in example, we had just a few weeks ago, um, some people wanted to carve out two acres out of a piece of property. And they went and had a legal description prepared without the benefit of a survey, which in most counties, that's just unheard of. Um, built their house, built a bearing by a law bar, um, wasn't gonna fit it, and that's when the, the, the neighbor encountered it. Maybe you might want to find out where the property line is at forty-five fifty. And lo and behold, the property line went right through the dead center of this new law bar. Um, I talked to those people, and, you know, like, I, I feel terrible for them, but, you know, they paid six hundred dollars cash for a legal description that was forced in this law. And now it's gonna cost them thousands of dollars to buy property off the neighbor, resolve the property lines, and so forth. Uh, you know, it, it just doesn't need to happen, honestly. Um, you know, a lot of the rules, in every county's got different rules and regulations, but at the end of the day, all the, the counties that surround you and all throughout southern Indiana, the rules and regulations that are put into place for subdivision control ordinance are there to benefit the public from one standpoint. It's to protect it. I don't look at a subdivision control ordinance as a hindrance. It's not a means to put a burden on somebody. In the long run, it's to prevent these problems. Uh, and so when you have a good subdivision, uh, control plan in place, what you're doing is, is you're putting in place certain rules that everybody can play by. Everybody can apply by, whether that's somebody cutting out a couple lots out of a forty-eight acre farm, or that's Indiana land coming in and trying to, to do, uh, excuse me, some of the things that they do. Um, I want to be a benefit to your board. I'm, I'm not a resident of Washington County. Again, I spent a lot of time down here, and got to, to meet a lot of people, a lot of good people. I know, uh, a lot of the people, a lot of you, some of you I don't. But I'm, I want to just basically come and introduce myself, tell you a lot of the problems that I see in Washington County that we don't see in other places. I want to be a resource for all of you to reach out to, or maybe some solutions. What I see that works in other counties, and what I see that doesn't work in other counties. There's no perfect system out there. Um, some counties have got some things figured out, and some counties got some things that need to work on. But more and more problems do exist with properties and real estate, and transferers of splitting property in Washington County than any other county we see. And, you know, it's been like that for years, so, uh, I just, I've always, I've always said, someday I'm gonna come, reach out to you, let you know that, you know, um, if you have any questions on whether it's some of the things you see, some of the things I see in other counties, um, some ideas on how you can go about taking your subdivision control ordinance, if there's particular problems that you are sitting on a regular basis, um, you know, those may be some things I can help you work out with. Uh, you know, I, I've been fortunate, I've worked with Travis, I've worked with Emily. You have some really good resources in place. You really do. Um, you know, Travis is great to work with, very enough. Uh, Emily's the same way. You know, as county surveyor, um, you know, I know, I'd say I know every county surveyor south of Indiana, it's that thing, and, you know, not every county has a licensed surveyor, because there's so few of us. Um, but as far as, you know, county surveyors who aren't licensed, I look with Emily as one of the top. She, she really knows what she's doing. So you've got some really good resources in place. It's just a matter of five, two, and your subdivision control ordinance from keeping some of these things from happening. Uh, I, I've thrown a lot at you there, but, um, you know, one of the things I, 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 I break up all the time, and I, I say this. Um, currently, Washington County is the only county that I know of that does not have a land surveying company in your town, in your community. And you gotta ask yourself, why? Why? Why is there not a surveying company in Washington County? And I'll tell you why. And I contemplated this for years, for twenty-one years, I contemplated adding, in an office down here, staffing it with another licensed surveyor, staffing it with qualified people. But the reason I don't, and the reason that no, no other company has done that, is because you're not going to open up a business and conduct business in the right way when a subdivision control ordinance would allow someone to write up a legal description from their kitchen table. When there's no rules in place to do things right, people will always take advantage and do things by any loophole they can find. That's why you do not have a land surveying company here in this community. I've talked to them all, we all know each other. I, I would have been here twenty years ago. But it's, it's not productive to try and establish doing things by a certain method in the right way when those types of things happen on a regular basis. Is there anything I can answer, or any questions you might have? I'd love to leave my, my phone number with everybody and just say, I'm here. So if there are any questions I can answer, or anything better, I'll answer.
I have a question that I talked to Daniel a lot. Um, my question is, if people come to your county and they own a divided property, what does their process look like, as in, not our processes?
Okay.
What, what would happen for you?
Okay. Uh, I'll take you through the process. So, for example, um, well, I, I bought a twenty-eight acre farm here, uh, six months ago. I think Lori and I, that's on the upgrade side of it. Uh, I sold three acres off to my son. The process isn't that. Um, there is some rules and regulations on how the survey is conducted. The county has a ordinance that says, this is the minimum acre, this is the minimum, uh, frontage. Uh, this is what you can do with access easements, this is what you cannot. It's all spelled out in the ordinance. The survey is prepared. The survey is then, it, it's checked by our planning zoning director. It's checked by the number of lots. Does it inform what type of subdivision it is? Is it a one-track split? Is, is it several tracks? Is it a thirty-track split with no road frontage? What are we talking about? So it starts there. And if it conforms to the basic split of one track, or two tracks, or three, I think like three or four, uh, then it is approved right then, stamped by the planning zoning. It is then taken and recorded. But in Jackson County, and here's the, here's the, the important thing. When a new deed is going to be filed, there's no getting around the system. There's no cheating. If someone walks in and says, I'm splitting out five acres, and here's this deed that I prepared. The system in place in Jackson County is, they will not record that deed until the survey has been recorded. Okay? So once the survey is recorded, they call the surveyor's office, my, the Jackson County Surveyor's office, and it's a quick hang, is, 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 has that survey been filed? Has it been recorded? Has it been stamped by our planning zoning director? Yes, yes, stamped, and it's moved on. It's a really simple process. It takes, it takes a lot of the, of the stress off of our planning zoning director. It's a lot of stress off of me as the county surveyor. There's a system in place, so when that gets recorded, it's been seen by many people. And that's kind of a simple process, a simple split.
And that will take place prior to the deed being done top of.
I'm sorry?
Like your survey to be done.
Yeah.
That would then be took to the top of.
Mm-hmm.
Then they would, once the money had already traded hands, it would be known that that was already approved prior to.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the system. Uh, and, you know, the question just came up to me several times for people in Washington County who have kind of counter argue this, is, well, we don't want to put people in positions where they have to pay for surveying. I would say to that, I would counter, let me put you in touch with the hundreds of people over the last twenty years who have gone down very bad avenues of paths because you didn't require surveys. And talk to them. The, the big thing that I hear whenever I have to sit down with family and say, your property line runs through a garage, your, your acreage is, this is a problem, is, the number one thing I hear is, how in the world can this happen? Wasn't there some sort of system or something in place to keep this from happening? And that's the thing that breaks my heart the most. Like today, I had to say, no, there's not. And so you can't get hung up on the fact that, listen, I, I, I don't like rules and regulations either. I am, I'm the most anti-red tape, I'm the most anti-rules and regulations person you'll ever be, trust me. But at some point, the focus needs to be to protect the public. Protect the public from going down these avenues if they found out that their setting system is on the name. You know, Lori must have put a house up herself, and she finds that, oh, no, we've got serious problems. And I, and I'll tell you one of the things, since I've got you here, you cannot put a lot of faith in the GIS system. No GIS system. Okay? I, the, the running joke among the surveyors is GIS should stand for get it surveyed. And that's the starting joke. But keep in mind, GIS is nothing more than a tax map laid on top of a thirty-thousand-foot area, okay? And you, they can be severely abused. And if you use these too much, you're going to get burned. It's just a matter of wait. You know, I, one of the things that, you know, we talked about tonight, I stepped through the, the, the building set stuff. Um, you know, one of the things that if, if Connor was here tonight, he's our planning zoning director, he would tell you is, is with, with these surveys coming in, it makes his job so much easier. You know, people come in for a building permit and a survey, they're, you know. And if there's any questions at all, he'll just say, look, you know, until we know where this house is gonna be in relationship to this property line, we can't issue this building permit. They're not gonna get themselves in this situation where a building is built, and then they find out that it's within the building setback law. It just, it just does that, doesn't it? You know, you, you've got, you know, Travis trying to go out and verify building setbacks from buildings to property lines. Not truly knowing in a lot of cases where that property line is. Um, unless there's a surveyor markers to look at. So it's, it, it really, it puts more burden on Travis than what needs to be. Uh, when these terribly written legal descriptions come in, it puts a tremendous burden on Emily and her staff. Um, and none of that, none of that needs to be. There is, you know, a better subdivision control ordinance would, would solve a lot of problems. Uh, and it can, you know, I, I hate to, I hate to use the Indiana land, the land of Indiana adage, but they've done that because they can. They've done that, they've, they've, they've chosen Washington County because there's things that they can get around. Um, they can, they can, you know, throw a private road in here, or throw an easement there. There are no restrictions on, okay, how many residential homes do we have to have served off the easement? And I'll tell you, I, I, you know, as a twenty-one-year licensed surveyor, I've been in a handful of court cases as an expert witness. And people ask me all the time, how many of those were boundary disputes? And believe it or not, in twenty-one years, I've never been an expert witness in a boundary dispute. Every one of them have been over legal access to the property. Is the number one problem we see? When you have an easement that crosses another person's property, and that access does not lie where it should, it creates numerous problems. And again, it's, it's another problem we see here.
Daniel, I have a question. Every transaction that's done in Jackson County, after it's a single split, you require a survey.
No. No. An existing parcel is not required to be surveyed. The only thing that's required to be surveyed is a new tax parcel, a new tax entity.
New tax. That's the term.
It is, it is.
It's gonna create a new tax.
If you're creating a new tax parcel, a new tax entity, then it is required. We cannot require somebody, you know, if, you know, if I'm saying, you know, if you've got five acres, this is impossible, and you want to sell to Lori, we're not required, there's no county that's gonna require that to be surveyed. You're creating, you're basically transferring an existing tax parcel to somebody else. It's when you're creating new tax parcels, when you're creating new properties, you see a problem. Good. Another issue, and it goes into what I saw today. You have a lot of issues where there are multiple residential homes sitting on one property. That's just unheard of. I can take you to places and show you two, three houses sitting on one tax parcel. We don't have that in Jackson County, and you don't see it in any other county, again.
You see it here.
Yeah, you see it here, a lot, a lot. You know, i- i- one residential home per tax parcel is a common thing, not just in Jackson County, but in every county. Uh, I don't know of, I'd have to study to find where you can go and build multiple homes and put them on one property or one tax parcel. But we see it here all the time. And then that just causes all kinds of problems when that goes to be divided, when that goes to be transferred.
Well, I have a question. One of you, you made mention about private roads.
Yep.
Do you see the private roads issues in other counties?
No, not like we do here. Not like we do here. You know, I can, I can think of, just from here, my, you know, I think of two or three subdivisions that were done over the years here in Washington County where they put in private roads. And, and one in particular that stands out to me is, is where they plotted this private road, and where they poured the gravel, and where this road exists is in two totally different places. Okay? So again, if your mindset is to protect the general public, put yourself in the position of somebody who owns a lot in one of these subdivisions. And you decide to have your property surveyed. You tell You tell them you have a private road easement, but guess what? It doesn't fall on that ground drive. It's actually planted somewhere else. That happens a lot. And anytime you have easements that serve multiple residential tracks, you are going to have problems. Most counties will think, they'll say you can only serve one parcel, one residential, or maybe two. Um, but generally, it is restricted on how many lots you can serve by an easement. Uh, private roads is just not something you see anywhere else, which creates a lot of problems for your county. A tremendous amount. You know, most counties, when you put a subdivision plant together, you're going to build a road. You're going to build it for county expense. And that's just, you just know that that's what you're going to have to do.
We have hundreds of.
And you do, you do.
They're starting to come out of the woodwork.
Not only do you have hundreds of them, and not only has it become a burden on Washington County, but it's become a complete burden on the people who bought those lots. I use the adage and I probably should, but I, I call them the buy here, pay here of property. You've ever been, been by a buy here, pay here auto lot, see how they operate, they sell a lot, pay your down payment, and you own a car and you make weekly payments, and they pray that you don't make your payments so they can come get that, that car. But a lot of those lots and a lot of those subdivisions work is the exact same way. They're still working. They are the buy here, pay here of property. And you see that in Washington County, and you don't see that in other ones.
But the roads, the private roads are really becoming an issue because now that, uh, the subdivision, some of them are saturated, they've sold all the lots. And just had one lady call me, it was a problem with her for almost two hours. Just, just outside, south of town of here, you know, subdivision with, uh, about forty people and same, same company. The last lot sold, so they claim now that they can wash their hands of it. So they're not going to put gravel on the road. She wanted them to come pay for my long road.
Yeah.
And they, they don't understand.
No.
They've, they've been sold a bag of goods and they've been told that the county will take care of it.
That's, that's right.
So thirty, forty years ago, because we haven't had any rules, now we're paying.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. You know, I brought up when I first started here, I've been talking to Urban about this twenty-one years ago. You know, these are problems that Urban and I discussed many years ago, this doesn't exist. And to some degree, I should have been here a long time ago. You know, the random thinking of private roads. The one thing that I noticed is that when I hear that and I see that issue, I think about the problems that it causes among all the landlords. But the number one thing I think of is I think about commissioners. I think about the burden that that puts on the county commissioners of having to tell somebody, we cannot, they're paying this rate. You know, they bought that lot in good faith. You know, a lot of these people buy these lots and this is their current property in good faith and not understanding truly what they bought. Lori, you've seen that. You know, like you said, they got, they got sold, you know?
Well, there's issues that mail won't get delivered on some of them during, you know, bad weather, inclement weather, school buses won't pick their kids up.
Yeah.
Some of them are just, you know, disabled, they can't get their kids to the bus. It's, yeah, it's very.
Yeah, I think, you know, I, you know, after talking to these people with this, this, this problem today, I was in Emily's office and, you know, we've broken out a plan, you know, it's trying to be pushed through Washington County right now by one of these same companies. Where they're taking a piece of property and dividing it into twelve tracks. They're trying to revitalize it through, okay, without, without, you know, being the real guidance from subdivision control ordinance. You know, at some point, I just, I say the subdivision control ordinance is a lot like zoning. You know, it's easy to say we don't want zoning, but I think we can all agree that some zoning is for the benefit of the public. Subdivision control ordinance is the exact same one. Okay? It's easy to say, well, we don't want to require this, we don't want to require that, until you see how many people are affected by any of those problems.
There are a lot of them in this county.
And there are a lot of them.
And apart about, you, you have a sympathy for commissioners. But that's just the tip of the iceberg.
Yeah.
We're, we're used to, you know, phone calls, people complaining, having concerns. But what, what really makes me sad, really sick is, uh, like this lady last week. You know, I've seen this happen so many times. In her case, there were twenty people living on this road that's a mile long. Some of them have the means to chip in and have their road taken care of, upgraded, have a stone put on it, and a lot of them don't. So they were going to have a neighborhood meeting a week ago, well, I saw. And they did, and I told her to call me back. She hasn't called me yet. But I told her what was going to happen and it happens. What will happen is neighbors will scream and yell, I'm not paying for this. Um, you just want it on your end of the road. So you want us to put stone on the front end of the road, but what about me? I live on the far end. And that is the sad part because then neighbors become enemies. And there's nothing worse than that.
That's true. You know, one of the things that we see in Washington County that doesn't exist anywhere else is some of your clauses with family or neighbors. I know it sounds like a great, great idea on paper. It sounds like, okay, if I was to split a piece of ground off of my son, my daughter, or a neighbor. But when you take the shortcut, it doesn't matter if it's your son or your daughter or a neighbor. When you take that shortcut and you go and have a legal description prepared for that survey, when you have something split off, a new tax parcel, you don't do it correctly. And you're setting those family members up or that neighbor down that same dangerous path. Uh, there's no exceptions to let that anywhere else in a scene. Um, and so I, I understand the thought process of that is, is, well, we want to, we want to be in an area where we can do this with my neighbors, we want to do this, we do this for our family. And I get it, but at the same time, don't we want to protect those people the most? Don't we want to ensure that if you're going to split off two acres for your son or daughter, that it's done right? Don't you want to ensure that your subject system is clearly on your property? That their buildings or home bars, the things that they build are on the property? To where, you know, if you make that exception, those are the first people that run the risk of being hurt the most. So I've, I've, I've always kind of not understood the logic there with that.
I'm a firm believer that if your child wants a couple of acres off your ground, bind on the other side of the county.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're a mature believer.
No. I'm a believer you shouldn't always live by your parents.
So.
It doesn't always work. But I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
And we've discussed it.
Oh, Lori and I have talked about this for years too, you know, like it's, you know, it's just, and you see, and it doesn't have to be that way. And, and again, you, you, I, I enjoy working in Washington County. Uh, I hope to do business down here for a whole, for a long, long term. Um, I'm not tied into any politics down here, just, just to be honest with you. I couldn't tie you half of your office holders up. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not, uh, I'm not driven by anything politically. I don't, I don't even know how the politics work now. I only care about trying to help Washington County do better. I care about instituting a better subdivision control ordinance that I want to help your board, that helps the people's wealth. That's, that's my view.
Well, you've certainly given us a lot of good information and we will certainly, from a more likelihood, be calling on you as we get into some of these sticking points. We're just about to wrap up our revised version of our subdivision control ordinance. So in, in several cases, we looked at surrounding counties and a lot of times Jackson County too, because, you know, things are done, for the most part, I think, done right up there and we will still have hurdles to get over and questions. Just like this relation thing on the deed and landowner. That's probably not a good thing in the long run.
Let me know.
I think we get to that point legally. How do we get to that point where you just write it? I, I can write up the land description, get patents. How, how do we get there? Uh, spread it out, you know?
I'm one of them. Okay, you asked me a question and I'm going to be, I'm just going to answer you.
Hold on.
In Washington County, the reason why you have gotten to where you are today is because legal descriptions were prepared as an easy way out. You had a method of how land was divided in Washington County that was different than any others. In any other county in southern Indiana, there was a process. You call a surveying company, they split out a piece of ground, they review a legal description, you took the survey plaque, you took the legal description to your family, attorney, or your title company, you had it done. In Washington County, for many years, you had a pay, you had a pay to, a pay to play system where you could have a legal description made for a few hundred dollars cash. Or you could go to, um, Grant Hall, who has a little bit of experience. That was always the case. Disrupting that apple cart meant that it changed the system. Uh, from a standpoint of it made it more difficult. It made it a little more expensive. And it took away the option. People did not want to hear that there was a, a method of doing this. Um, to put this this bluntly, uh, for many years, you know, this is part of when Emily was here, of course, and even when I died, I didn't, I didn't did a great job. You could walk into the Washington County Surveyor's Office and pay the county surveyor to write you a legal description. Okay? That doesn't happen anywhere else. And I'm being blunt, you asked me this question. Okay? Now, that's, that's just not the process. I'm not even the county surveyor. County surveyors, as the county surveyor, is not perform private practice work. That is illegal. Okay? When I put on this hat that says foresight lands surveying, I'm the owner of private business. When I'm the Jackson County surveyor, I'm the Jackson County surveyor. And the two do not meet. Okay? People do not walk into the Jackson County Surveyor's Office and pay to have private practice survey work done or pay to have legal descriptions written. But for many years, that's how it operated down here. And that has led to a lot of how we got here today.
I believe that.
Part of that, uh, early on in your topic, talking here, you talked about the shortage of surveyors.
Yes.
So if I wanted to set aside my farm, how many days out is, would I be on a survey?
Well, that's a good question.
Because maybe that's driven, has that helped drive some of that? I'm not saying that it is, I'm just expecting.
Yeah.
It would have driven some of, of that walk-in office.
You know, and, and I'm not saying that that isn't something that, that, that could be the case. Um, you know, the, the practice of land surveying is, is an economy-driven profession. I mean, when the economy is, but I mean, we're very busy. The economy's slow, we're, we're, we're not. Um, are people impatient? Absolutely. I mean, I get calls, people want me there tomorrow. Uh, do I have to put people on a waiting list? I do. Um, you know, if, if you're going to build a house, you know, you know that there is a process you're going to have to follow. Um, you know, and most people we find understand. They understand this is the process. We have to get the property first, we have to get it into our name. Okay? And if what's the property, it's ours. Give me the, go see our, 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 uh, our building commissioner and say, what's the process here? We, we're going to survey it, we want to build a house, what's the setbacks? What process do we need to do? Um, I'm not saying that time may have been a factor and may be a factor going forward. Um, there's a lot of surveying companies. They all just surround your county. Um, you know, like I said, I'll survey today. Um, I stopped by a job site today in northern Washington County and I ran into another surveyor from a family, you know, I talked to her a while. And there's a lot of surveying companies that do work in Washington County. But again, you will not find one here.
From the, I can say from the real estate world, there's times that we need them fast.
Yeah.
There's times I've called Daniel and he's like, I can't do it.
Yeah.
We, you can usually find someone. I mean, really, I mean, it may not be your first or second, and it's, to me, it's not whether that one's better than this one. It's who you're used to working with. Um, it's just connections, you know? But there are, I actually never thought about that. We don't have anybody in the county.
Yeah, I, I would have loved to have been here twenty-one years ago, to be completely honest with you. Um, there's just, when, there's just no, there's just no incentive to do, do so. And it, it's not a financial thing of, well, the surveyor can't make money surveying, so he's not going to be here. It comes down to the point of all the surveyors are busy in every other county doing things by the rules and regulations. You can either make money in a county by doing things by the rules and regulations or you can make money in a county by fixing problems. We make the bulk of our money in Washington County fixing problems more so than doing things the right way. So that's the thing I see. You can, you can, you can, you can fix it on the back end and it costs you three times the amount of money or you can do it right the first time. And, and that's, that's a simple thought.
Makes sense.
Did you say that it makes Congress jobs easier, surveying staff?
Yeah. It not only makes Congress jobs much easier, it makes my staff at the county surveyor's office much easier. It makes our auditor, um, our auditor, you know, is, it makes their life so much easier. It's just, once the system's in place, um, and moving forward, you know, will you have a little bit of time where someone says, well, we didn't have to do that before? Yes, you're going to have that. Okay? Um, that's just, you can't, you can't fix everything that's been done in the past. At some point, you need to draw a line in the sand. It says, at this point forward, this is how we're going to do this. I'm going to do it the right way going forward. Um, you're going to hear some of that. But I assure you, I can bring a hundred people in here easily who have run into these issues and run into these problems, who would thank you for finally fixing this. So, you know, uh, you know, not involved in the politics side of things. So you're always going to have people momentary on both sides. You're going to have people momentary, they didn't want rules and regulations and I did it. At some point, rules and regulations, again, and I just hate this. It got to say for our publics that people don't have to go down these roads. Lori, a good point, uh, and I know you've seen this. How many real estate closings have you seen held up because problems were found?
Several.
Okay, so we're talking about the timeframe. What if you wanted to sell? And now all of a sudden, you realize, like, these people today, they found out they got twelve acres. There's twelve acres they don't have. And so now here they are, they're trying to get this all squared away with their, their daughter to get this all together. And now they've got a much, much bigger issue. So we've seen real estate transactions where everybody's angry. I get it. You know, let's get this closed, let's get this out the door, and then you find these problems. And now maybe a simple thirty day closing now turns into several months. And that didn't need that.
Anyone have any further questions for Daniel?
No, I just appreciate you coming in and talking to us.
Yes.
All our work here in Washington County.
No, no problem.
Answer all our phone calls.
Yeah, I'm always, you know, I, I take calls from Emily. Uh, Emily will call me, you know, about the Jackson County Surveyor's Office and how we can get to the county surveyor's office. And I'm an open door, I'm here to help. Um, I'll leave, leave some cars up here, my cell phone is always on. Um, give me a call. Um, I will say this, um, we start, I'm licensed in Indiana, I'm licensed in Kentucky. And I've seen just about everything over the last twenty-one years. And I've seen, I can tell you what counties do things well and I can tell you what counties do things not so well. The only good thing that I will say about this is you are creating it, hopefully, you will be creating a subdivision control ordinance after seeing what everybody else did well and after seeing what everybody else did not so well. So you have an opportunity to really put something awesome in place. I can tell you what, you know, Scott Kennedy does this, um, you don't want to do that, you know? Uh, and I can tell you some of the problems that some of these rules and regulations have. So, um, is Washington County behind? Absolutely. But you have a golden opportunity here to be cutting in. You have an opportunity going forward to have one of the best subdivision control ordinances based on what other counties do. Lisa, do you have anything?
I don't. I, uh, maybe just one general question. So there's a surveyor shortage, we think. Uh, is Purdue the only school that?
No, actually, actually Purdue lost their program. Uh, Purdue hasn't had a land surveying school in probably at least a decade.
Is there any school in Indiana?
Yeah, Vincent's University is a very good land surveying school. They operate two-year and a bachelor program. Uh, there's also several schools that surround, surround our state. Cincinnati State has a very good survey program. Uh, Vincent's University, Fair State, if you go towards the northern, you know, towards Michigan, Cincinnati State, there's three really good schools. Uh, I'm proud to say my oldest son just graduated and Maggie got his degree in land. Uh, I'm proud to say my oldest son just graduated and Maggie got his degree in land surveying. He came to work for me full-time, so hopefully one day you're sitting here talking to him instead of me. Uh, my middle son is, is enrolling in the fall in a land survey program. So hopefully, uh, there's several of them planned, what you're under your survey. Um, and you know, they, you know, my oldest, uh, he loves working in Jackson, in Washington County too. And so hopefully you'll see several of us down here working for years to come. And I know there seems like there's a, and, and I know there seems like a, a tremendous surveyor shortage in here. Because to some degree there is. Um, you know, there's several companies to choose from around, around in surrounding communities and surrounding counties.
So how many, how many surveyors, how many people sitting for the, uh, land surveyor license are passing each year? I mean, getting in to being licensed, I heard, it's a very low number.
It is. Only forty-one percent take the exam and several pass.
Very hard.
Um, to become a licensed land surveyor, it takes a minimum of eight years. That's combined college and experience. That's a minimum. That's before you even take the state exam. So you, you're eight years into it before you ever take the state exam. Then there's sixteen hours of national examinations that you got to pass. One, about a forty-one percent pass rate. Um, then after all that's done, you have to pass an Indiana state test, uh, which is an additional two-hour test. Is it difficult? Yes, it, it is. But it's also very difficult to be an attorney. It's very difficult to be.
I took the LSIT. I think it was harder than the bar.
Well, it's funny you say that. So there is a national speaker who is a licensed surveyor. He is an attorney and he's very well-known and he travels all over the US giving speeches and he said the same thing. He said the SIT was by far harder than any law exam ever took. But, you know, we're working through that. So I feel like we're simply under the heat of all. It's just like this, I will say this, and I'll take too much of your time. Is there an electrician, a plumber shortage?
Yes.
Yes. Is, is there a shortage for a lot of professions, okay? You know, one of the things that's said is the average age of a licensed surveyor is, and my, my, my argument to that is, is, well, what's the license? What's the average age of a plumber? What's the average age of an electrician, okay? Don't say the land surveyor. This is a national problem, okay? This is a national problem. So don't let the effect of there's not enough surveyor sway your, your thought process.
Anyone have anything else? Well, thank you again. I appreciate it. We might have you back soon. We'll be stationed. Welcome anytime.
Well, thanks for having me. Like I said, it's long overdue. I'll leave some cards up here. Travis and I, I know Travis well, you know, good luck and Lori. So reach out to me with any questions, you know, if you, if you think, well, how do we do this or what's wrong with that? Give me a call. I'd love to discuss it with you. And when the time comes to sit down, uh, I'd love to bring Connor back. I'm sorry he couldn't be here tonight here. Uh, Connor writes a lot of subdivision control ordinances for a lot of counties. He's really good. Um, I, 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 that would be an avenue that I would discuss if you need any help with actually having common sense ordinance. He, he is very good.
Certainly consider that. Thank you again, man.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Amber.
Appreciate it.
Uh, anyone have something else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. First mate, let us prepare to send by Mr. Richardson for all those things that I.
I thank you.